Okay, alright. No, because I was talking to my sister, she's part of Illinois County, she's a third county. And I thought, I've never heard of her.
It'll be interesting to know what it is.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
I'm sure you wouldn't want to be your fault. But then I said, you know, we all. It is tough, you know. Oh, yeah. I don't know, I had my tickets sold. It's a big game, isn't it? Maryland, they're playing Maryland, number three. I know, but my tickets didn't sell. Let me get this stuff to you first.
Hey, Jack. I did, we spoke this morning, actually.
I think my seats are sitting out. Man. I don't know what.
Well.
My signature.
Uh, this is a.
Stuff I drank. By Miller Canfield, I don't know why. Four thousand dollars. They've done a lot more work. So those two things need to be. I guess it is something fifty-eight, fifty. Is that base price? That's what it was, I think, in the middle. Single sided. Oh, so we've got coming up next, uh. I know there was three big games. Illinois. Illinois ranked. Minnesota, I think it's. I had tickets for the Michigan State Championship game. Yeah, Phoenix. Phoenix. Oh.
Did you?
Yeah. It didn't go so well.
Yeah.
Do you get? I have a pop. You want to give me a water or something? You gotta give me another dollar. You gotta give me one more dollar. I got a five, you get a five? You give me a twenty.
Well, you can have one too.
Does it take fives, Tracy? So is it a dollar twenty-five or is it a dollar? It doesn't, it doesn't take fives though.
It don't take, it don't take five.
I don't know. Well, how much do you have?
I got a twenty.
Well, give me the twenty.
It's not gonna take twenty.
I, I might take the twenty.
Well. Went to the gym and worked out before this, and we had a cardiac arrest. It's a cousin of mine.
Really?
Yeah. Looks like, looks like he might make. He had a bad one?
Huh?
He had a bad cardiac arrest?
Well.
I guess all cardiac. Depends whether you're having it or me having it.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, but he's got a good rhythm and he's playing, he's pulling on the tube. How old, uh, kid's gotta be sixteen, six. Yeah. How are you? Doing well, thank you. Trying to get to the schedule on this crazy website. Are you on this Michigan website? Um. Yeah, I think I got that one. All sports. And. Yes. Previously, they lost to Purdue. Upcoming. Minnesota. What, they got Iowa on the seventeenth, and it's not it. We got, I was on State play on Thursday. That's away. And we got Minnesota. Twentieth. That is, that's next Wednesday. That's here. Minnesota almost beat State, didn't they?
Yeah.
Who beat State?
Was it Illinois?
Or, uh, no, or was that? I think they might have had. It's not. I don't know, was it? Men's basketball. Okay, so we got Minnesota. Rutgers, are they any good? I don't think so at all. I'll just have whatever, they gotta diet on it. I'll get your water. Yeah, great.
Yeah, just pass it as out.
Yeah, okay. You gotta invest it. Howard. Bill's getting to me, come on, give me a water. I owe you pretty much. What, what did you do on this?
Did you give me six dollars?
Give me five.
You gave me five?
Give you a twenty.
No, wait a second. That's me to do to you.
Give me a twenty.
Hi, everyone. Um, earlier tonight, we had a special meeting that we need to come out of before we start our regular meeting this evening. So I'll make a motion to bring us out of closed session.
Support.
Inkstrom motioned and Chick supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. It's a second call to the public, but this was for the special meeting. Uh, we have two more calls to the publics coming up. So, anyone want to speak right now? Alright. Uh, board member comments, anything? No? I'll make a motion to adjourn our special meeting. Thank you. Okay, welcome, everyone. Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, sorry for the late start. Uh, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we can get our meeting started.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Uh, Angie, would you like to do a roll call?
Thomas. Otto.
Here.
Westovers here. Inkstrom?
Yup.
Sockit is absent with notice. Braun?
Chick?
Here.
Great. Uh, that takes us onto the consent agenda. Um, anyone have any questions on the minutes and bills? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes and bills as presented.
Support.
Inkstrom motioned and Chick supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. And to adopt the balance of the agenda, we do have some changes that need to be made. Um, I passed out, I know some of you were not in your seats. Uh, the resolution for the poverty reduction. We can make that number nine. And number ten. Um, the, also the note that was left, uh, just shortly, a few minutes ago, Miller Canfield. Uh, they have a request for an increase in the fee. And then number six, I would like to do, uh, take off of the agenda tonight. I'm not ready for the appointments this evening. Anyone else have any changes, additions, deletions?
Can I make a, ask a question?
Yeah.
If we're deleting number six off the agenda, um, usually when we first started on the board, uh, we made a, uh, an agreement that when appointments were going to be made, we presented them and then the next board meeting, we voted on them. When are we gonna vote on this? On the planning commission?
Uh, when I'm ready to make the appointment.
I think we actually had one, if there's a policy, if not a policy, it was a, uh, an agreement that it should be done within two weeks of the time the announcement was made.
I'm not aware of that and I'm not ready tonight, so, um.
I didn't say we're ready tonight. What I'm asking is, is if we're not gonna do it tonight, are we gonna do it at the next meeting?
The appointments?
Yes.
Or they're.
We're voting on the appointments.
We can do it in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay, can I also ask, I'm sorry, I don't know, we're off on a different topic, that when we do that, that we can ask people that are interested or that send in letters of interest that they're being, I think it was two, allowed to speak on their own behalf, so that we can get to know them, people out there can get to know them, listen to what they have to say and, uh, make, decide, or we, then we can decide.
Yeah, we'll see. I mean, we got two weeks to, for that, so. Alright. Any other addition, uh, additions, deletions? Nope? I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda. Removal of six, add nine, and add ten. I need a support on the agenda, uh, thank you. Uh, Inkstrom motioned and Braun support?
There's no vote on?
I'm sorry, we are, it's not called as a public, we're almost there. Okay. Alright, those in favor? This is just, aye.
We're on the agenda, right?
Yes, that is all we're doing. Thank you. Aye. Any, uh, nays? Motion passes? Takes us on to our second, uh, or our next business item, which is called to the public. And once again, this is an opportunity for the public to get up and speak and share your thoughts. For anyone watching in TV land, it's not a question and answer session at this time, and the board will address, uh, concerns later. And we do try to limit everyone to three minutes. Welcome to our first speaker.
Thank you. Ed Voitas, six-two-three-five, Helena Road. I'm happy to see that you delayed that selection, because I don't think you're ready either. I think before you take that step, you need to do two things. One, you need to come clean and tell the residents about how the business has been conducted between the board and the planning commission, our township manager, and also our planner. And then based on that, you probably owe the citizens of the township an apology. You know, to start with first, you know, we have Doug Luan, an experienced planner who's been with the township for years, whose company has never walked away from a township, walks away from Northfield saying, "I can't work with these people anymore." You know, that we never got a good explanation about that. So then you go through the whole process of interviewing new firms, new people, you make your own selection, we hire another person, okay? And what happens again? Now Leah has also quit. So you have a couple of professionals, consultants, who make their money by helping townships who say, "I can't work with you guys." I don't think the problem is with the consultants. I think the problem is with how our business has been conducted. And I think it's time for that, we get some honest answers about what's been going on. You know, these guys make their money by serving townships. If they're willing to walk away from that, something must be seriously wrong. And I don't think it's fair to just ignore us anymore, but I do think it's time we start getting some answers. You know, Mr. Fink, like in the December eighth township meeting, when you embarrassed Leah by calling her, her behavior, uh, unprofessional because she talked with residents. Residents whose taxes pay for these consultants. They work for us, Mr. Fink, not for you. It is their obligation to talk with us. That shouldn't have been criticized. When you criticize planners like that, they don't really need to stick around. They can walk, which they've done again. And what an embarrassment for this township now. Two township planners, one that you guys selected, said, "We can't work with you guys anymore." How bad is that? So before you make those decisions about replacing people on the planning commission, I hope you can tell us a little bit more about what's really been going on. About the agenda that you've been pushing, that even your new consultant could tell that the residents didn't want and is not supported by the surveys. You know, if you won't listen to us, at least listen to the professionals that won't work with you anymore. It's an embarrassment. The township residents deserve better. We deserve better representation. I hope you consider that before you make your new appointments.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker?
Cecilia Infante. Ten thirty-five East Five Mile Road. Um, I think you got the sense of the tenor temper pulse that's obviously a problem of the lack of communication between township officials and the residents. And so, I just want to say, sticking to what I'm going to say, I'm hoping that the appointments that have been put off, whatever, I don't care, that these appointments do take the opportunity to clarify communications between township officials and the residents. And that this committee that is created represents all of us. I'm a small business owner. I've been living here for decades. And I applaud Township Manager Fink for putting that note in the current, advertising these postings and encouraging people to collaborate and to, you know, take responsibility for the government of their own community. We need a committee, a planning committee that represents all of us and that answers our emails and that sits down with us at a cafe and talks to us about our interests without fear of, I don't know, being docked a dime or whatever. Um, when I write Carl Levin and Debbie Stabinoff, and I'm not a crazy, I've only written them both once, I got a non-automated email return. I got a message. I rarely get responses, and when I get responses from everyone in my own township, I can tell it's at some sort of a weird risk. We have got to clarify communications. The current, ah, it's a place to start, but the committees are really where it's gotta happen. Um, I'm way off script, so let's see. No, that's what I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers this evening?
Hi, my name is Susan Schenk. I live at six hundred West Joy Road in a neighborhood that I believe is pretty much perfect the way it is. Tonight, I, um, came prepared to, to support Jennifer Delisle, Craig Warburton, Udo Huff, and Jack Seacrust. Obviously, you can't appoint all of them to the planning commission. I hope that you do go forward and make those appointments soon. It's really important to have broad representation on commissions in our township. The township is meant to serve all the residents who live in the township, and it, it doesn't matter whether the person you're representing voted for you or not, or whether you like them or not. You're here to represent all of us. And so, when I was a trustee, I made sure to appoint people who I knew did not agree with me, who I was pretty sure campaigned against me. If I thought that they would add something vital to the conversation, and they did. And we, we came up with some really great solutions because there was broad representation on the town, from across the township and from across different sectors. I'm asking you to do that, to make sure that these appointments aren't just about rubber stamping. And I, I know sometimes I get up and I talk to you, the board. I know that not everybody on the board agrees with everything and that you, you are representing different aspects. And I appreciate that, and some of you have been more responsive than others. And I want you to know that I appreciate those of, you have shown respect and kindness to, to me and the other people who have gotten up here and talked. Um, it's really important. Jennifer Delisle, I know better than some of the other, well, actually, Craig Warburton, Udo Huff, I've worked with them too, quite a bit. Jennifer Delisle especially, she's a graduate of U of M Law School. And, um, she is, she's a former member of the planning commission. She's really good at writing ordinances. And even more than being good at writing ordinances, Jennifer's really good at listening. She's really good at listening to all the different opinions that people have. People who agree with her, people who don't. And when I was a trustee, Jennifer reminded me often that it's very important to have a broad representation and it's important to work together. And she's gonna bring that to the planning commission if you appoint her. She also is serving now as president of the Northfield Township Historical Society, and she's doing an awesome job. She's really very, very detail oriented. She has an incredible memory. She's very curious, and so she's always working to try to do a better job and find out everything that there is to know about a topic. You cannot go wrong with appointing Jennifer. So, I want to thank those of you who, um, I just want to thank all of you for serving, but thank all of you who have been responsive to listening to, to us the most. Um, I also would like to know why the planner quit. It's, when I go out in the community, I hear things about the way, the, um, the way officials of other townships and organizations are treated by some people from our township who represent our township, especially you, Mr. Fink. They're not always nice. And I think it's really important that our township public face be competent, be respectful, be kind. Um, and I don't feel that. And I, I'm, you know, I'm, I, I'm not that soft. I've, I've served. I am on boards out in the community. And, um, I want to feel like when I come up here and talk, that, um, you know, that this is a, a group that's working together in all of our interests and, and I, I think we've got a ways to go on that. So for those of you who are working toward that, I appreciate it and, um, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Thank you. Sam Iaquinto, nine-eight-seven-six, Main Street. I would just like to share with the board that the chemistry makeup of the planning commission, at least for the past year, with the appointments that were on the board. You have four individuals that are property owners of five-plus acre parcels within our community. They are spread out through the southwest quadrant, through the southeast and south quadrants. And then you have three other individuals that are on quarter acre zonings within the Hamlet area. So a majority of your planning commissioners are within the rural areas of our township. And it's been a very good, very pleasant, um, working group that has, uh, helped move, uh, many positive things forward for the township. And it's a very good board that has, that is well diverse through in the, through in the township as well too. So I think that's very important that you keep that in mind. And then, uh, one of the statements that have been made about Mr. Fink, I have, um, heard from Washtenaw County planning, or Washtenaw County Commissioners, um, Ann Arbor, um, politicians and, and other, many other groups. And they have been very, very positive and complimentary about Mr. Fink within the political environment of Washtenaw County and Livingston County, as a matter of fact. So, I just wanted to share that with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker? Oh, here's our next one.
Mary Davlin, nine-two-one-one, Brookside. Here we are in the year two thousand and sixteen. My hope for this township, for this year, is the following. That we do not dwell on past administrations and their failures or on local political groups. As residents, we all need to work with our township board and our manager and work with our planning commission. The key word here is the word "with," not "against." If we do this as residents, our future in this township will be better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name is David Perry. I live at nine-four-one-one Earhart Road. Um, I was very saddened to learn that Leah DeMichele, our new planner, chose to quit working with our township. Uh, she's intelligent, she's articulate, and she listened to the voices in our community, and that was very valuable. She used data in her decisions, um, in her comments, uh, and she listened. So, I unfortunately believe that these good qualities are what put her at odds with some members of the planning commission and our township manager. I think there was a lack of chemistry there, is the expression I've heard. I witnessed some rude and confrontational behavior in at least one meeting. Uh, some of you were present. Uh, I stood at this podium and I essentially denounced that. It's not appropriate behavior. I've done that myself sometimes, but not in a public meeting. Nobody's perfect, okay? But it gets back to the whole idea that, um, we need to have a civil discourse here. Tonight's agenda includes two planning commission appointments. This is an election year, and the township will witness who votes for whom and remember in November. My neighbors and I on Earhart Road are organized, and we are committed to keeping our community on the path the master plan has set. Members of this, um, Board of Trustees voted in our favor when we tried to stop an expansion of our business here. I want to thank you, those of you who voted, uh, in our interest. You listened to our voices, you followed the master plan, and our neighborhood has remained as it should be. We will support those who listen to our voices and support our desire to do this. We have our hand in the pulse of the community, and we know this desire is not unique to Earhart Road. Um, I see you, you know, sitting here behind these tables, um, but really, I don't envy your position. I know it's difficult. I know you're here, you know, putting in your best. Um, but, um, really, you need to listen to the voice of the community, and that starts with the master plan, it really does. Uh, there was just a comment regarding working with the planning commission, working with the Board of Trustees, working with the community. That is exactly right, and that's exactly how the master plan was created. Exactly. Let's follow that plan. I agree very much with what the lady said. Let's work together with that plan. Our township needs planning commission and Board of Trustees members who can really listen to the voice of the community, use the master plan as a strong guide, and conduct business in a non-confrontational manner. And it pains me to say this, but unfortunately, one of the candidates, Sam Iaquinto, has not done that during the past few years. It's time for another person to fill the seat that he should leave vacant. Now, again, it pains me to say this, but I have to tell you, my community, my, my, uh, neighborhood and I organized when we had a threat to our neighborhood. We came in here, we, we pled our case, we talked about federal laws that would prevent expansion of this business next to a waterway. We talked about the fact that this business that has three hundred and fifty tons of pesticides stored in their barn, never registered with the Washtenaw County Department of Environmental Health, um, should have done that in nineteen eighty, been inspected monthly, never did that. Our public affairs people, our public, uh, safety people didn't even know it existed. So since the hostages were released in Iran, nineteen eighty, they've been flying under the radar, and Mr. Iaquinto and some others voted in favor of that. So, are we listening to the voice of the community? Are we looking at, 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 at the reality of a situation? You can't run a government like that. You can't run a township like that. Okay, I'm getting off script too here. Uh, and my apologies to Mr. Iaquinto, but I, uh, will tell you what I think right in front of you. I'm not gonna talk behind your back. And that's, I speak for my neighborhood when I say that, okay? We regretfully say that. Larry Roman, on the other hand, another, uh, planning commissioner, does respectfully listen to the voice of the community. He uses the master plan as a guide. He speaks to others with respect, and he has appropriate experience for the job. He certainly deserves to continue being a member of the planning commission. He supported Earhart Road when we most needed it. Mr. Roman, I hope you're listening. We have not forgotten. We have not forgotten, and we thank you. There are four other candidates who I believe have the necessary background and open minds for a seat on the Planning Commission: Jennifer Delisle, Jack Seacrest, Craig Warburton, and Udo Huff. I urge you to consider all of these people in addition to Mr. Roman. And finally, I'd like to close by saying that municipalities, townships, like people have reputations. We have to be careful of ours. And I'm asking all of you to do that. I want to thank those of you who stand here and sit here. Can't be easy on that side of the table. I understand that. Listen, let's have a civil discourse. If you vote against what I want, if you don't think the way I do, that's okay, but let's have a dialogue. Okay? No games. Transparency is everything, okay? Trust. We need trust. If there's no trust in you, you don't trust us, we get nowhere. I'm out of time. Thank you for that additional time.
No problem. Our next speaker.
David Gordon, Helena Road. In my rush to get here, I forgot my speech, so I've kind of shot it down. I had it down to exactly three minutes. I'll try to keep it to that. My comments tonight are not directed at all of you, or all members of the Planning Commission, but they are directed at some of you. I was not surprised to find that our new planner quit. As a matter of fact, at a certain point, I figured that was the, that was the plan among a certain cadre of people in this community, was to get her to quit, especially after she made a presentation on September 16th, which I would hope everyone would go to Northfield Neighbors dot today and look at that presentation, because it was excellent. But it flew in the face of some beliefs that are being held by certain so-called leaders in this community. This young woman arrived here, warm, open, enthusiastic, and she brought a fresh perspective. What she got in return was a lack of support, a lack of respect, bullying, and rudeness. That was more than enough to quit, I thought. But she stuck it out. And she changed her perspective a little bit. She was a little quieter. She wasn't so willing to offer her opinions, because she could see the pushback that she got. And I think she was surprised by it. But then at the last meeting of this board, the Christmas meeting, right before the holidays, at the end of the meeting, her gift from this board was being thrown under the bus. The hatchet job that was done on her was sad to watch, and it lacked any managerial practice that I'm aware of. This woman was accused of a real professional violation. It sounded like it was a crime. What had she done to deserve this? She billed the township for a conversation with a resident. That resident happened to be me. And it wasn't just a conversation. She actually made a meeting to have a conversation with me, and then billed the township. This was made out to be some sort of sinister, horrible thing. Well, I just caught off the phone today with Doug Lewan, who's been our planner here for more than 10 years. He billed regularly for talking with residents, developers, and other interested parties who called him that were related to the township. It is, he said, "common practice" throughout the entire industry. This is not something new. This is the way it's done. And if you'll look at the bills that have accumulated in our archives over the last 10 years, you'll find that this is not a professional violation. I'm getting the feeling that the violation is talking to certain members of the public without getting approval from higher-ups. I didn't see that in her contract. The contract of Beck, Gorman, Raider didn't have anything about billing for conversations with residents. It didn't say you could, it didn't say you couldn't, but it was certainly not a violation when it's common practice. Ask Doug, call around, you'll find that out. What I find really terribly disturbing is that nobody spoke up to defend this woman. And you guys should have known what you're paying for. You've been paying Doug Lewan for talking to residents. What's sad is that there's so much incivility around here that has become the norm. You don't even understand when somebody's being thrown under the bus, and you accept it as okay. Some people even cheerleading it, thought it was 100% accurate. That's sad. I tried to talk to the township manager, I mean township engineer, a couple of meetings ago, at a meeting. The engineer said he couldn't talk to me. He directed me to the administration. Is there a gag order for our professionals now? I certainly hope not. This is still America. And in terms of how the PC, the Planning Commission, has been functioning, it's been dysfunctional, regardless of what some people may say about how everybody's getting along. When Mr. Stanilecchow was first appointed, the first thing they did was try to kick Marlene Chocley out of the chair and take over. That's how well they get along. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other speakers this evening?
My name is Jennifer Delisle, 7441 Spencer Road, right in the middle of the township. I came here tonight, as you can imagine, as an applicant to the Planning Commission, only that was postponed. But I'm here, and I'm going to talk anyway, because I don't know if I'll get another chance. I would like to see the Planning Commission work on consensus building. There is so much energy and volunteerism in this township. Imagine what could happen if we all worked together to make this a better place. Let's work together to foster the sustainable growth we'd all like to see, while maintaining the beautiful rural character of a township as well. Let's show prospective residents and investors that we are friendly, responsive, respectful, professional, and welcoming. Let's make Northfield Township the jewel of Washtenaw County. Because I'm, Wash tonight, that's not what we're looking like right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Craig Warburton. I live at 450 West Joy Road. When I saw the last page of the packet was about replacing the planner, couldn't resist picking up the phone and calling Leah and finding out where they went on. And fortunately, I guess, not unexpectedly, she was the epitome of professionalism and just repeatedly told me it wasn't a good fit. You know, I found her work to be exemplary. From the very start, she was met with minimization, disrespect, being disregarded. You know, it seems a little stupid to select door number three and hire another ones simply for the sake that you're going to do what you want anyway. Mr. Iaquinto paints a picture of a pretty happy sandbox at the Planning Commission, and when you sit there and watch, it's not so happy. There are some really good people on the Planning Commission. There are some incredible people on the Planning Commission. And there are some factions being built, and some consensus being built, that take this township in a direction that's not reflected in the surveys that have been done and the comments that come from all the people. You know, the hardest words and the stupidest words in business are, "We've always done it that way." And maybe it's time to put some different people in the Planning Commission and get a different pair of eyes. It'd be really nice if there was someone from subsection three, since it is the hotbed of development in this township. Perhaps there should be at least one resident from that area participating in the conversations. You've got some pretty qualified people. I've got a snowball's chance in a hot place of actually being on there, and I'm willing to sacrifice that for the sake of making some comments. What's going on isn't pretty, and it's childish. I hope you'll look at what the, when Carlisle Wortman walked away, maybe they were tired of us, maybe they weren't. They're probably the preeminent, one of the preeminent planners in the state of Michigan. And I found Ms. DuMichelle completely engaged and giving 110%. And in both cases, it's just not a good fit. We're the only township in Washtenaw County with professional management. The only, I'm sorry, township with professional management in Washtenaw County. There are only 38 in the state of Michigan out of 1,200-plus that have professional management. I think we should be, at that point, prepared to do a much better job at engaging and keeping good counsel at hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers this evening? All right. Let's get on to our correspondence and announcements. Is there anything that anyone needs to add outside of Howard's manager report or anything? No? All right. Let's go to our department head reports. Howard, we'll start with your report. Does anyone have any questions for Howard? No? All right. Bill, you're both fire and police this evening?
I am.
Great. Thank you. Bill's obviously here for fire and police, if anyone has any questions on his report. You do, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Motion to approve the hiring of Russell Hollister as a paid-on-call trainee firefighter, contingent on passing a background check and physical.
I'll support.
Thank you.
So Chick motioned and Inkstrom supported. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I think you just had the one-action item, correct, Bill?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else for Bill before we move on? All right. That takes us to Tim and the wastewater treatment plant. Anything in addition to your report that you need to share with us tonight?
No.
No? Okay. Anyone for Tim? Any questions? All right. Tammy's not here this evening. I would suggest if anyone had any questions for her, you know, regarding her report, to give her a call directly. Kathy, thank you once again for the financial report. Is there anything that you need to add? No? All right. Tracy, is there anything on the Parks and Rec?
No.
Jackie, CBA?
No, we did not meet for the month of December.
Okay. Janet, Planning Commission?
Planning Commission met December 16th. There was a public hearing on request by the Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation to rezone four parcels from local commercial district and agriculture district to recreation conservation district, as well as a site plan review from the Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation to develop a preserve off of Seven Mile. There was also additional discussion on changes to the bylaws and a request by Nowatski Truck and Trailer Dam Wrath Group to amend its site plan and retain the chain-linked fence around the property instead of an approved cedar fence was denied. That's all I have.
All right. Great. Thank you. That finishes our reports for the evening, and it takes us on to our agenda items. Number one is the corrected meeting date schedule. There were two wrong dates, and I make a motion to approve the corrected meeting date Inkstrom motioned and Brown supported. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Onto number two, which is the Kwanis request to waive fees. I'm assuming you've all read the memo.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to waive the fee of $100 zoning application related to the Kwanis moving to the downtown space for the thrift store.
I'll support. Chick motioned and Inkstrom supported.
Is there discussion?
Yeah. Any?
I have to abstain.
All right. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Number three is the civic event application for pond hockey.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve a civic event application for the Michigan Pond Hockey Classic to be held February 5th, 6th, and 7th, 2016, with February 19th, 20th, and 21st as the backup dates contingent on all necessary requirements are met prior to the event date.
Can you tell me the, what's the backup dates? I'm sorry.
February 19th, 20th, and 21st.
Okay. Great. And Chick motioned and Brown supported. Any discussion? Yes, Bill?
So I talked with Mr. Iaquinto today. Included in that list on his cover letter there, we also want to, and he's agreed to this, but we're asking for several things. One, because of the incident that we had there last year, we're going to ask to have at least one certified officer along with one reserve officer there. We are also, and Mr. Iaquinto agreed to this, we're going to trespass the subject that got into the altercation with our officers last year from the event. And then we're also asking the pond hockey to do some training for serving liquor for anybody that's going to be bartending in the beer tent that night. We did get a couple of different reports of people being overserved in the beer tent. So we want to make sure that bartenders can recognize when somebody's been overserved and cut them off, and, you know, if need be, contact the security that's on site or one of the police officers that's on site. There is a few, the liquor license, the DNR permit. Now, it's normal that we don't have all those in this permit signed and ready to go, but we ask that you approve that contingent on all those things that I've mentioned and all the things that are on the cover page of the letter there.
Do you need that as part of the motion, or is that just part of the requirements?
As long as you allow that latitude to me, then I think that's fine. Usually, that's how it works, and we somehow get it all worked out by the day of the event.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? There's a motion on the table. Those in favor? Aye. Aye. Those opposed? That takes us to number four, the zoning change for the Washtenaw County Preserve.
I have a motion. It's a little long, so bear with me. I make a motion to approve case number JPC 150006, Washtenaw Parks and Recreation at 2230 Platt Road, Ann Arbor, Michigan, 48107. Rezone from local commercial district and agriculture district to recreation conservation district, section 36-125. Parcel numbers B-02-04-100-002, B-02-04-300-001, B-02-04-400-003, and B-02-09-200-001, and are zoned AR, RC, AR, and LC and LC.
I support.
That was a lot. All right. Chick motioned and auto-supported. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Number five is the Horseshoe Lake Sewer refund. Anyone have any questions regarding that?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a refund due to Mr. Rick Van Born as part of the Horseshoe Lake Sewer Fund disbursement in the amount of $906.21 to be paid from the wastewater treatment plant fund.
I'll support. Chick motioned, Inkstrom supported. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? That takes us to number seven. The ordinance, oh, the code ordinances. Anyone have any questions on that? I'm sorry, I'm a little out of order here. And I apologize, Bill and Howard, I didn't have a motion prepared on this.
Just motion, you can use ordinance 16-46 as fine, but just go ahead and, anytime you make a motion on an ordinance, just for future reference, you always motion to approve the title of the ordinance and the number.
Right.
So that way, if there's any confusion, that's what you're approving.
And this is the top one that you want? Because it's a little different than usual.
Yep. And ordinance of the township of Northfield. Yep, and ordinance of the township of Northfield to amend.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to... An ordinance of the township of Northfield to amend Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, finance by adding a new Division 6 Emergency Response and adding new sections 2-281 through 2-284. This requires a roll call vote? Any discussion before I start?
Give me a second.
No, sorry. Second?
Second.
Thanks. Inkstrom motioned, Chick supported. And I'll start with the roll call over on my right. Chick?
Yes.
Bron? Inkstrom, yes. Westover? Otto? Thomas? Thank you. Number eight is the planning consultant.
I'll make a motion to direct Howard to enter into contract negotiations with McKenna Associates as planning consultants for Northfield Township.
I'll support. Chick motioned, Inkstrom supported. Any discussion? Go ahead, Jackie?
Could we ask if they could come back to the next board meeting to do a presentation? Because I know that there was a reason why we didn't choose them or there was a reason why. And I don't remember from our notes or my notes what the whole thing was. And I'd like to understand more about the contract and for them to do a presentation before we...
Well, and Janet, I remember it as though it was presented to us from the Planning Commission that either or were acceptable to you guys, correct?
Yeah, actually, the first choice was McKenna Associates with Beckett and Raider being the second, but the board decided to go with Beckett and Raider. And so they were a good firm. I don't know if I still have my information from that that they passed out to us, but I can take a look. But if you want to have them come back and talk to us first, I have no problem.
I'm willing to go without a presentation because they were the second choice. It was a very close decision, I think. Yeah, that's just...
Anyone have any other thoughts? I personally remember, you know, it was a tough call. It was practically a coin flip for myself. So I don't need another presentation, but if Jackie would like one or would you want to call them directly? Or does anyone else want to chime in? Tracy, your thoughts?
I don't think we need another presentation. I do remember it being fairly close. I remember the applicants being pretty well-qualified. So I don't think there's too much to be gained by another presentation.
What I was... What I'm asking for is not that we don't vote for tonight. We can vote tonight, but what I'm asking for is they come back and do a presentation.
Yeah, that's what I understood you to say.
Just to engage with us again because we haven't engaged with them.
Well... I think it's a good idea for the board members to get to know them. I mean, I think we need to go ahead with the contract and acquire them. But I think if each of the board members, any of the board members want to talk to them, we can call them directly or speak to them. I'm not sure if the person that actually gave their presentation will be the person that will be the planner. So we could probably find that out and then find out who that contact person is going to be. I'm not sure that them coming before the planning or the board to give another presentation similar to what they already did is going to make any difference. It might be...
I'm not saying it's going to make a difference. I'm saying it will engage with the board. That's what I'm saying.
Well, the task at hand tonight is to move forward and give Howard the authority to start working with McKenna to get going. Is that what we're trying to accomplish, so the Planning Commission can get going here? Correct.
No, I'm not arguing that. All I'm asking is that the next step is that they would come back and speak. Because we need to get back in engagement with a planner and that's the best way to do it.
Right. All of us feel comfortable with it. I mean, I don't know how you want to handle this. If you want to call them directly, I don't know what to say.
Well, if I'm not going to be billed for it, or the township won't be billed for it, I will contact them directly and set up a meeting.
All right. So you have the motion on the table, correct? Okay. And I'm sorry, Lisa, do we have a second on that? Okay, great, thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those oppose?
I would just like to encourage people on the board to contact them and speak to them personally, get to know them, let them get to know us.
Right. But it's for the Planning Commission. You guys have discussed it and comfortable with them and I would go with your recommendation. So we had... Did you... Yes or no? I'm sorry. A no. Okay, so one no, Lisa. I'm sorry. That motion does pass. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to number nine, and that's the resolution for the poverty reductions. We do this every year. It's for the assessing department. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the property reductions resolution, number 16. And there are the XXX because those numbers are not identified yet for... At this time. Those will be added per Howard. So I make a motion to approve the resolution. Thank you. Inkstrom motioned and Thomas supported. It is a resolution. We call... Calls for a roll call vote if we have no discussion. Thomas? Otto? Westover? Inkstrom, yes. Bron? And Chick?
Yes.
Thank you. Number 10 is the request from Miller Canfield for the increase of fee by $4,000. Howard, you got any comments on that or...
Recommend approval.
Great. I'll make a motion to approve the increase of fee by $4,000 to Miller Canfield. And this is on the special assessment bonds project. Inkstrom motioned, Thomas supported. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those oppose? Motion passes. That takes us onto the second call to the public. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Come on up. We have our first speaker.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside. I sat here and listened to negative remarks concerning our township manager, Howard Fink. And to say I'm livid is putting it mildly. I don't... You know, people are entitled to their opinions. However, Howard Fink works above and beyond expectations. That does include many, many hours more than people work in a factory or in offices or other occupations. And he does go to other meetings throughout the township and throughout Washtenaw County. And he goes to bat for this township. And he's helped a lot. He's reduced a lot of things. He's reduced some insurances. He saved this township money. But unfortunately, some people aren't giving him any credit for anything and I think it's a shame. And he has this township's best interest at heart and I wish other people would see that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Our next speaker?
I forget what book it was that I read that... It was a child-rearing book and it said that you should try to catch your kids being good. In other words, rather than yelling at them when they do something wrong all the time, when they do something right, say, "Hey, you know, that was really good, okay?" And we've heard a lot of criticisms tonight, but I would like to thank every single member of the Planning Commission that anonymous... Who unanimously voted for the Whitmore Lake Preserve. And I'd like to thank all the people here on the board for approving that tonight. It's an example of the Planning Commission working with the Board of Trustees, following the line of the master plan, which was devised by the community, working with the Planning Commission and working with the Board of Trustees. I think we should all pat everybody on the back and I want to say thank you. And I hope we can look at this as a very positive thing, an example of what we can do moving forward. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. Oh, that takes us onto board member comment. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Sue Schenk, 600 Westjoy Road again. Two things. Ms. Otto, I want to thank you for suggesting having McKenna Associates come back for a presentation. I don't know that if it was for our benefit or not, but I know a lot of people tonight expressed concern about the planner situation. And we're very keenly interested in what the new planners are going to be like and a presentation would help us have a better idea about what's going to be coming down the pike from them. The other thing is I want to say how excited I am about the Washtenaw County Preserve. And I heard about it yesterday from somebody else and I don't know what numbers are involved, but that also represents some money coming into our community because that land was purchased from somebody and those people got paid for it. And so we have two cool things. We've got some people who are getting some value from their land, doing a good thing. And we have a preserve for as much open space as we have in our township right now. We don't have a lot of publicly accessible open space. And so this is a great addition and I'm really excited about it. So thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Hello, David Gordon, Helena Road. I would just like to request that the board instruct the manager to have a discussion with the new planner and find out whether the new planner is going to be able to talk to residents or not. Because if you're violating a relationship with the township and by talking to residents, then I'm a little confused as to what the township is, if not the residents. It might be something you want to specify in the contract because there's nothing in the contract for the woman who just left here that says she can't bill for that. We now have a situation where we don't even have a planner from Washtenaw County serving us. We're reaching outside of the county to find somebody for professional services. If I was McKenna, I'd charge a double after what I've seen happen in this community. Why would I put up with this type of abuse? For the same amount of money as the last two people left saying, "Adios, it's not worth it." It's not often that consultants fire their clients. It's not financially profitable for them to do so. And I think you need to start questioning why this is happening in our community. It's never happened before. I've never heard of it happening in any other community. It's a black eye. And I would encourage some serious dialogue here without concern about what will be written up in the local paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. That takes us onto our board member comments.
Can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
May I make a comment before board member comments?
Yep.
So, you know, obviously in my position, it goes with the territory. There's, you know, lots of individuals that are... There can be individuals that are happy with the work I do and there can be individuals that are not happy with the work that I do. I think the seven of you, you know, on this board know me, know who I am. And there are many members in the audience that know me quite well and who I am and what I stand for. There are some members in this audience that frankly I don't feel safe having conversations with. And nothing that happens or is talked about, you know, tonight is going to change that. But what I can tell you is that a dialogue is a two-way street. And there are some people in this audience that have already left today that I've had substantial dialogues with, individuals that other members in this audience find as friendly, as cooperative with their own efforts and as aligned with their own efforts. I would encourage you all to develop relationships for yourselves. And instead of... Instead of listening to the tremendous amount of dialogue, and yes, Mr. Gordon, I will still say misinformation, that is out in this community, I encourage you, if you wish, to come in and ask questions. Now, obviously, I'm a human being and an individual and there are times when I don't feel entirely safe to have honest, complete dialogues, but I will certainly answer any questions that you have. With respect to my relationships with individuals in the county, there are times when my job requires me to go to bat and defend issues related to this community that don't always come across as copacetic. But for the most part, I have pretty strong relations with people in this region. I lead certain groups. I've been asked to volunteer on others, various appointments throughout the county. Certainly, I have work and growth that can happen. I'm a young man. I'm not at the end of my career, nor would I say I'm at the peak of my career. And I certainly can learn and learn from mistakes. And I will continue to do that. And I have made mistakes as everyone has made mistakes. I encourage you all to develop your own relationships, if you wish, with me and to come and ask questions. But, you know, and again, I will say that, you know, unfortunately, and it is a fact at this moment with me. I can't deny that there are certain people that I don't feel safe having those conversations with because frankly, there is too much conflict going on in this community and there is too much... There's too much negativity. I also would challenge you all to ask what you're arguing about, what we're fighting about. Because I don't really see that much that's happening that deserves this kind of... Is rancor the word? Deserves this kind of rancor. You know, there's... It's clear. It's 100% clear to me and to every member on this board and to every member of the Planning Commission. Whether they agree with you or not is a different story. But it is absolutely 100% clear that you want to preserve the rural character of Northfield Township. Okay? That's clear. Now, you have to move past that. Because while that's clear and while that... Everybody understands that, there are going to be some people that agree with that and some people that don't agree with that. And you have to allow the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees to do its job. Right now, there's nothing in front of the Planning Commission, that I know of, that is threatening that perspective. Nothing that's threatening that way of life, if you will. Nothing that's threatening that baseline. Certainly, Biltmore came up and the neighbors effectively... Very effectively voiced their opposition and their concern to it. The Planning Commission has voted already, five to two, to say to Biltmore, "We're not going to entertain a proposal from you unless it's in conformance with the master plan." You know, I, I certainly think that you should continue to voice your opinions and your concerns and state what it is that you want your community to be. But I really, I'm starting to not understand why there's this level of conflict and animosity. Because it feels to me, and I know I'm kind of babbling and maybe I should just shut up, quit while you're ahead. It, it feels to me like we're fighting over nothing. Again, I'm not perfect. You all want to have a conversation with me, have a conversation with me. I, I will try to do the best I can and speak as honestly as I can. And, you know, if I, if I don't feel safe having the conversation and unfortunately, there are some people in this audience that I don't feel that way. I don't feel safe to have that conversation because there is so much negativity and misinformation and animosity that is existent and exists. So, you know, with that, I'll continue to do what I think is in the best interest of Northfield Township. I'll continue to work tirelessly for this community. And when the next board comes, they can decide if they want to continue my services or not want to continue my services. And I will still work to do everything I can until that day happens for the, for Northfield Township.
Thank you, Howard. Um, all night I've been making notes, you know, with our speakers here and I had the exact same thoughts. It would be nice to all work together, but when our speakers, it, it's hard when the same people keep coming up and they're ones making false accusations against us, twisting the truth and never have a nice word to say. It is hard to work together. It upset me and I was disgusted on our last me, our meeting in December when we approved the sewer district for the Whitmore Lake Road. Everyone came out and in droves with twisted, bad information, thinking that this was all about Biltmore. And we are in cahoots and doing everything behind the scenes and unethical actions. And it really upsets me and I'm sure everyone else on this board. When you want to work together and you act like that at these meetings. You are publicly making the township look like, like we're all crazy. There was nothing wrong with that sewer district. It was nothing we brought forward. It was years ago that they asked for this. And I'm tired of listening to it, honestly.
Howard, thank you. Um, by the way, I want to always say I think you're doing a wonderful job. And you've put more hours into this township than anyone ever has. And well-needed for a long time.
Thank you. Just so you know, I sit on Parks and Rec with Jennifer Delisle. Jennifer Delisle and I have had conversations over the years about this very issue. Jennifer and I, Delisle and I don't always agree, but we have a really good dialogue. Sam Iaquinto, who I understand is, uh, i- is, is, is a, a member of this community and some people like Sam and some people don't like Sam. And I don't always agree with Sam. And I tell Sam when, you know, I think that there are things that I don't agree with. We have a good relationship. David Perry in this audience has criticized me at times and we've also had very good conversations. I remember the very beginning when I first met David Perry and he came in with, uh, the residents that were in, uh, were in, uh, concerned about the business that was in their area. And I sat in the lobby with that group for probably an hour, trying to help you guys understand how best to communicate with an elected board to get your point across. I wasn't doing that because I had any ulterior motive or hidden agenda for or against the business. I was doing that to try to help a group of residents that were desperately trying to get their voice to be heard. Jack in the back. I've had, just, just this morning, had a great conversation with Jack. Cecilia Infantfonte, have I, have sat down for hours and had conversations. She had concerns about develop, about, uh, noise barriers on US 23. These are all individuals who, there are various people in this audience that feel copacetic with. I have great relationships with these people, not always in agreement. So this kind of attack, you know, after a while, uh, you know, I have broad shoulders. I've been doing this for more than 10 years now. This is obviously my profession. This is obviously my job. This will happen in any community that exists in America. There's always going to be conflict. But, you know, I encourage you all to develop your own opinions and your own relationships with individuals. You know, Susan, if you have concerns or questions, ask me.
I will ask you one thing, which is, are you aware that Biltmore still has that property at the end of Lake Street? Is it still a possibility?
I am aware of that.
Yeah, but let's, uh, no, I mean, we're at board member comments. I can't, I let this open up to question and answer. I mean, if you guys want to have a conversation directly, feel free. This is not about Biltmore right now. Howard, you got anything else?
No, I'm sorry to have dragged it out. I apologize.
Janet?
I have a couple of things and, um, I try really, really hard to be fair with people. I try really hard to listen to what people have to say and kind of weed out the speculation and the assumptions and the suppositions that people perceive from things that do or do not happen. Um, I, I want to make one thing clear that I heard tonight that made me a little uncomfortable. And again, it had to do with Howard. Um, he being, um, I don't want to say he's, was being blamed for Mr. Michelle leaving, but his name was mentioned in regard to that. And people should be aware that he had very little, if any, contact with her, um, through the entire time that she was here. So, uh, her leaving probably had little to nothing to do with Howard and their relationship. I, if she says it's not a good fit, I think we need to respect what she says and the fact that she does not want to talk about it to people. Um, and that shows that she is a professional and just let it be what it is. Um, I would encourage that, again, that the board and the Planning Commission have many, many multiple discussions with our new planner so that that planner has an idea of, of what we want, what the people want. And so that, um, this doesn't happen again because we do not want it to happen again. And I do have one other comment and I was very happy to hear. I was, nobody here knows, it's, it's no secret that I was not happy that we weren't doing planning commission appointments tonight. But I'm very happy to hear that they're going to happen a, a couple of weeks. And I do hope that people that did send in their letter of interest will come to speak. If, if not, being invited that they come and speak at the, um, uh, board, or I'm sorry, public, hello. Yeah, that. Called to the public so that, um, we, we do get to hear from you. Because sometimes it doesn't make a difference whether or not, um, you have the experience, like if you're a builder and you're a construction or a developer or you, um, have a farm or something like that. A lot of it comes down to how you communicate with people, how people, um, discern that you can make decisions. Because I will tell you, I would not be on the Planning Commission if they, if they appointed me because of my experience because I had none. My first few years on the Planning Commission was learning. Um, I was very quiet because I had to learn some things and I'm certainly not the smartest person on there, but I, I've always been a good decision maker. So I think that's a big part of being a commissioner or a trustee or a supervisor or any elected official. So I think that's what we should be seeing or hearing from people about whether or not we're comfortable with how they're going to perform on the commission. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Kathy, do you have anything? Um, Angie? Jackie?
Um, I just wanted to thank those who submitted their interest in the Planning Commission open, openings. I think it's, uh, very powerful to see that this many people are interested in our township.
Tracy, anything from you? All right. Uh, make a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Everyone have a nice evening. Thank you.